Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Cumberland School Committee meeting, Budget Workshop, a special meeting of the Cumberland School Committee today, Wednesday, March 19th, 2025, at the Cumberland Hill Transition Building at 5:01 PM. Approval of agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Approved.
Motion by Mr. Bacon?
Second.
Second by Ms. Goldstein. All in favor?
Aye.
That passed. Any opposed? That passes four to zero. Please note for the record that Ms. Smith, Ms. Feather, and Ms. Shea are not in attendance this evening. Discussion and/or vote to approve fiscal year 26 school budget amendments. Thank you.
So to pick up where we started last week, I know we gave you a lot last week to look at. Just to start off with that one slide again for a few minutes, as you remember, we talked about a quadrant slide. Now Cumberland is on the far upper left, so we're, you know, high achieving and we're the least expensive. I think it's really important to note, even for the folks, you know, at home who may be watching, that, you know, it has been historically a pretty lean operation. That's not saying we can't or would not want to add more positions. And a minute Tony will give you a couple of things that aren't in the budget that we think, you know, if we had the funds, we would want to put in the budget. But just a few more thoughts on this. I know last time I was asked off-camera later, someone asked me, not every town's on there. That's true, there are a couple that weren't on there. Little Compton and Block Island aren't on there. Little Compton's about 30,000 a child, and they actually tuition kids in from places like Westport. But they would be upper-left quadrant near us. No, sorry, upper-right quadrant. They'd be high achieving, but near Jamestown. See Jamestown over there? Because Jamestown's, you know, smaller and you know, expensive. So it just, I think, you know, it's important to keep mentioning this when people look at expenses in town. Tim, go to the next one also. I think last time we touched this too. No, the PPE. You don't have that one?
This one?
No. Per pupil expenditure?
Oh, that's in the other side.
Oh, that's okay. Yeah. I know last time we talked about this too, where, you know, we rank ordered it for you to see it, so that's how much we spend per child. You can see Cumberland is the lowest, at 16, 16.5. And you see some charter schools in there in Smithfield. And you can see, you know, Barrington, East Greenwich are in the middle there. But, you know, overall, you know, it's hard to argue that we had not been efficient in what we do. So I just wanted to kind of get that out there. But having said that, there are always jobs that we feel we would want to add to move the organization forward. And I wanted you to kind of hear from Tony on what didn't make it in, but we'd like to, you know, we have like a waiting list, if you will, sometimes. If we ever get funds down the road, we always look at, you know, things we might want to get back in. For example, those two one-year jobs that were coaching jobs that we didn't put in. It's important to kind of just, you know, have those in mind. So with that, I'm going to have Tony just talk about what didn't make it in, but, you know, things we want you to just have in mind. And also, that's not saying you folks couldn't add these things at some point, right? It's my budget, but it quickly becomes your budget. You could say, we want all these things in. But then the question is, your fund balance is bigger, unless you cut something else. You've got something else, and, you know, and make it work. But I would say these are all excellent ideas. So I'll let Tony say a few words on this.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee. So I'm going to pause for a moment and have you read the left-hand side to just provide you with a little bit of context. And then after about, you know, a 10-second pause, I'll start to explain what all that means, okay? So each year, we go through a process in my office with the individuals who work closely with me. We also work in tandem with the administrators. And obviously, principals have to submit their budgets to the superintendent and the director of finance. We collaborate on what that looks like. Most recently, I asked principals, given our budget situation, I did ask each principal, because there are several needs that come to us each year. There are not just one ask from every building. There are things that they're constantly evaluating, and they feel they need to advocate for, and rightfully so. So I asked them to prioritize, if they could, a position for their buildings that they feel like they really need to move their schools forward. In addition to that, or layered on top of that, there are things that my team and I look at, and we think about how we are to move the district forward. So one of the things that I feel is my responsibility is to ensure the quality and the integrity of the academic program here. We don't want to be average. We want to be elite. So in order to do that, we keep evaluating, asking ourselves questions, looking at data, and saying, what's going to help us move forward? All right. So with that being said, one of the things that reoccurred and came up over and over again from the elementary principals was an at-minimum add of two elementary vice principals to assist them in handling the day-to-day operations of discipline, response to, you know, social-emotional needs of students, supporting teachers so that they can be the academic leaders and get back to being academic leaders in their buildings. So that was an ask. If we were to receive or add those two positions, it would allow for us to allocate and move, because we have one right now at the elementary level. The superintendent would then decide how he would allocate those three resource-wise, day-to-day, on supporting the principals based on need. So that explains the first one. I'm going to pause there and see if there are any questions before I move on to the next position.
Currently, you said there is one vice principal at the elementaries?
Correct.
That's at, which school? I'm sorry.
It's, well, it's moved around.
Okay.
It started out at Community because they were the largest school. Then they were, then the position, when funds got tight, they were split.
Like two F, almost like?
The half-day, like half at BF Norton, half at Community. And then the need shifted a little bit last year. And so at this point, Nellie is serving BF Norton and Garvin. I think she's back to Garvin. Okay.
The only difference there is we did have her more at BF for a period of time when the principal is out on a medical. But now that she's back, yeah, it would be a Garvin-BF split going forward.
So she kind of also fills in when necessary if a principal is out for any reason?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. They take over the leadership of the building.
Yep.
So the goal would be to have at least a part-time at every elementary? Is that?
Exactly.
Okay.
I would just say, in the ideal world, I'd have a VP at every elementary. And someone may say, well, back when I was in school, we didn't have that. The needs are way different than when we were in school. A lot of volume of things coming in. Adult problems, kid problems, just, you know, things happen. So it's not unheard of to have coverage like that in elementaries. But you're seeing that we are, you know, fiscally, you know, we're not, you know, high on the continuum of dollars. Just think back, maybe 12 years ago, 13 years ago, we had part-time nurses. But given what happened, all the kids now, a lot of kids have, you know, all kinds of, you know, things coming at the door now. We went full-time nurses for just sheer liability and just coverage of all the buildings, so.
Good. Okay. So the next two positions are actually, my office applied for a grant with the Department of Education, and we received the grant for two academic coaches. And so we launched and added these academic positions with Ride fitting the bill for these two jobs. And when the grant was given, we felt as though there was a commitment on their part to help us continue and sustain the funding for the grant positions moving forward. Well, budgetarily, it was not funded in this upcoming fiscal budget for the governor. And so they pulled the funding on it. The problem with this is, we specifically chose these coaches, coaching positions for a specific reason. Anytime we want to pay or put a hyper-focus on things that we feel like need to change from a data perspective, or we feel vulnerable, we add these types of jobs to help us support teaching and learning more in the buildings, help support the principals more, teaching and learning in the building. And so specifically at McCourt with their math scores, we felt like the principal, Pam and Christine Holman, their vice principal, they feel really strongly about retaining that position. The problem with getting meaningful changes is when you don't want to put in resources and take them out. You want consistency, because that's when you see growth over time, right? And so unfortunately, the position has not, it's working extremely well currently. But in terms of rooting it and moving forward, it did not make the budget because Ride pulled the funding, and the funding situation is what it is in our district.
If you're curious in dollars, Tim, is that 112 per with fringe?
Yeah, top-step teacher with fringe is of 112. And then, yeah, for a top-step teacher, so that's, both of them are right in that area. And then health insurance on top of that. So depending if they take a family plan or not, but 112.
Thank you.
I would add also, sometimes, not always, the aid picture can change for districts in late June. Early June, town passes their budget, we have our budget, you finalize your budget. Then some year's state aid comes in late June, and it's different. And if that was to the good, we could always revisit anything on this list. Keep that in mind. That does happen on occasion. I'm not sure it'll happen this year. But that's just something to have in mind.
By the way, I'll add that, you know, the superintendent, director of finance, if it makes the list, they value it. It's not that they're not valuing what we're recommending or what I'm recommending. So I just want to make sure that that's stated. So the elementary academic coach is in the same spirit of what I just talked about regarding math, except it's at the elementary level. Since the pandemic in 2019, the district was, it was at its peak. We had a lot of momentum. And I think we made it as close to, you know, behind Barrington and East Greenwich. We were up there in terms of, as a district, how we were performing in the state. And we still are, but that was our peak. And in ELA, at the elementary level, and at the middle school level, we've undergone a lot of curriculum change. It's created, again, a little bit of a vulnerability in terms of us being able to bounce back. And so what was working then, we're trying to figure out and solve, because what works then doesn't necessarily work now. So we're trying to work through that. And we feel like that position was helping us add to our capacity to be able to bounce back faster. The MLL teacher is, was the ask of the principal at NCMS, Beth Coughlin. That's related to sub-pop increases. So, you know, she wants to, I believe she does have an MLL teacher there now, full-time. But their population is increasing, and so she's trying to head that off of the pass with that add.
In terms of MLL population, how many do we have now, Tony, give or take?
It's approaching 300 in the district, if not a little more. Yeah, it's up there. Leveling off, but it's up there. The director of culture and student services, this is, the vision behind this position is really about battling student engagement, helping students that, you know, students with families that live in poverty or conditions that we feel like need additional support academically, getting them to engage, working with families, giving them the support that they need, empowering students, working on student absenteeism, getting them in school when they're in school, like really having sort of this dynamic, I don't want to simplify it, because it then, it seems like it's a simplified problem to solve. But if you kind of think about a Big Brother program, right, in the spirit of having a dynamic person that connects with kids, empowers them, gets them to value education, that's the spirit of that position. In my opinion, I feel like that would give us a leg up, because we are a diverse district. We're getting more diverse. And so if you want to stay ahead of issues and not reactive, that would help us do that.
On that job, the committee actually approved that job in G6 maybe a half-year ago. It actually is in the policy now in G6. It's vacant. Yeah.
Yeah. And there are two additional positions on the next page, I think. Yeah. So same narrative. But Pam Storm and Christine Holman and I, we have had discussions about, you know, what's going to help McCourt get to the next level. And so in addition to that math coaching position, because of the nature of the incidents at the school, the, we want them to be able to, as an administration, focus on academics. In order to do that, I think they need support, right? They need people on the ground helping them help students and solve problems on the day-to-day. And an additional dean would allow for Pam and Christine to really focus on academic performance. And so we felt really strongly about that. And then lastly, as part of the cuts this year, following the coordinator model we had in place K to 12, it's now K8 with the nine through 12 position as it stood being cut. And so I'd be remiss to not have that position up here as something important, especially given all the curriculum things that have to be done at the secondary level at the high school moving forward.
I could add to that one, too. That's been vacant this year, just a vacancy. We didn't fill it. Going forward, you may hear us talk about this job more, whether it's filled now or not, in terms of, high school regs are more of like a middle-high school conversation. So we think we may come back to you probably in policy first and look at G6 and, you know, have you consider making this job, or making the case to you to make this job more like an assistant principal kind of level job, bridging both middle schools and the high school. The regs have changed. Have you heard the term high school regs? They're changing how we look at high schools and how kids have to go through six through 12. And a lot of compliance issues, a lot of changes in what we do. So we think we may, you know, bring this back to you, whether it's filled now or later, to kind of rethink a bigger job description for this job. It was strictly just high school curriculum. It's now, we think, if we fill it, much more than that.
And so those are the, those are what we would call the priority positions. There were many others. But of course, we try to make it more succinct for you all to kind of really understand where we are.
And just to play off that, so here's how we think about this. In terms of, you know, where the line is, that's for you all to decide, right? My line to you was a million three of fund balance. Maybe your threshold's a million four, and you want one of them, right? Or maybe you found a cut to get something in. To me, I'm looking at, not only this year with Tim and Tony, but next year. Next year's the 4% raise, as you know, right? Pension increases, medical. So next year, we probably are looking at another, probably north of $3 million again of new revenue needed. So this year, state aid helped a lot, right? And the town, if we get the 1.7, that's helpful. But we can't always rely enrollment always going up, or town always coming through with that kind of a number, if they do come through with that number. So I think to us, it's a multi-year challenge, and just to stay viable every year. My one fear always would be to try to add, over-add, and then in two years' time, when you're out of fund balance, you have to cut everything. In terms of fund balance, a quick thing on that, just a review from last week, we were at 5.5 fund balance. We used 2.2 from last year, right? And we're going to burn most of that, we think. You'll 3.3 right now when the year ends. If you follow the current budget, a million three goes in, you're done with $2 million in fund balance in your savings account. The policy says 2% to 4% should be in your war chest for like a bad situation. Tim, 2 million is what percent roughly?
It's right around, should be right around 3%. Down at the bottom of this chart, you'll see where we would need to fall in order to stay in compliance.
Upset against 14,000 and he didn't have income at all. He put it against all these debts.
Yeah. We often see that in contracted nursing, OTPT, those types of services, where special ed will put income for the full amount. But if the student's not there, we don't get billed. So oftentimes, chunks of money will open up on those types of services. So just like Dr. Thornton said, that does occur.
So like factoring all that in, it's really what's your risk tolerance for using fund balance? That's really the question. There's no wrong answer. It's just what do you feel is your tolerance for that? But all these jobs are good jobs.
May I add something to that? I was just going to say, you know, it's really about, there's a consequence to either decision, right? Whether to use fund balance or not have the positions. The consequence of not adding positions is it caps, I think, our ability to scale and grow, just like a business. If you don't invest money in your business, there's a cap on how it's going to scale and grow. And so that's the way that I view when we bring these types of things to the table. We really feel like these jobs would make a difference. And there's the other side of that, where there are difficult decisions to be made financially, so.
Sorry. I just have a few questions. Is anybody else before I, okay. So just make sure I'm hearing everyone correctly. The math coach and the elementary coach were grant-funded. We had expected that they would have been three-year grant-funded, but they gave us, or?
I wouldn't say three years, but the breadth of it was, there was a commitment on Ride's part to push the grant.
Okay.
Let's spend the money so we can reengage in the funding. And the training that was given was so extensive that we felt as though they were committed to funding that position. Otherwise, we wouldn't have, I wouldn't have applied for the positions to begin with.
So if you had known that it was going to be a one-year thing, it probably wouldn't have been?
Even been gotten out of the gate. Yeah.
Okay. And that's currently, those two positions are currently filled?
Yes.
Okay.
I was surprised both those teachers will, in the job pool process, get other jobs in the district.
And the director of culture is a job that's out there but presently not filled? Okay. And the high school curriculum position is currently out there but not filled currently, but in the process of trying to fill it? Or am I thinking that? No? Okay.
It's a cut at this point.
At this point, it's not in its current form. It's a teaching job, not in the budget. And I would say to you, if you had an interest in ever looking at that, I would say, first, give us the opportunity to maybe come back to you with the job we imagined a little bit, a little more, a little bigger, middle-high. But it is a need, currently unfilled.
And the asks, not in the budget, but the asks are possibly two vice principals at the elementary, an MLL teacher at North Cumberland.
Yes.
And a middle school dean is another. Okay. I just want to make sure I have that.
All of those are technically asks.
Yeah. And they're all good. I'm not sure you could rank one over the others. Folks who make arguments for all of them passionately, it's, you know, it's hard to pick one over the other. But there are a lot of needs here. But I just wanted you to have it all, so you can get the sense of, it's not like there's an absolute line. We're good, everything's good. There's always more you can do. And this is for us, what we would show you as more.
Any other questions regarding the positions?
Is there any analysis on to these positions, which one would be more beneficial as far as, you know, moving the needle on test scores? I mean, do other schools have these positions?
So the, I would use, yeah, we evaluate the big picture. And so the buildings have their view and their scope on their need for their building and how they view it. My office, we look at the overall statistics, and we say, all right, as a body of work, how are we going to get the best bang for our buck in moving the work that we need to do? And so after that evaluation and that analysis, what you see there is what we feel will lead to, either directly or indirectly. Indirectly, adding a VP at the elementary schools helps the principals reengage in academics. More direct approach is having a coach that's closer to the teaching and learning. So yes, we do.
Here's one way to think about it, maybe. If you want, which job would touch the most kids? If you want that metric, I'd say maybe it's the culture and student services person would touch the most kids.
If you had to prioritize, if you, let's say, you know, I mean, I know, we don't like to focus on test scores, but if you were going to try to raise test scores in a school, you know, and you had to prioritize one of these positions or two of these positions, in your estimation, which would be the priority for that?
I would have to, that's a difficult question to answer, because I look at them as all having the opportunity to help us move the district forward in tandem. I kind of look at it as a network rather than in isolation. I would have to really think about it, and I'd want my team sitting there and arguing with me and, you know, us kind of hashing it out before I would answer that question in fairness. So, but I would.
We have a third workshop, maybe next week, we can invite Tony back to give you that answer.
Well, that's wonderful, Dr. Thornton.
So are there any schools in the area, or in Rhode Island, or even in nearby Mass that have the director of culture? And if so, is there any feedback on how that's working out?
So the spirit of that job kind of was born because we were growing exponentially in that multicultural ethnicity realm. And one of the things that we always think about when we think about the struggles that happen with certain populations and sub-pops that are struggling to achieve, you know, we try to get to the root cause of those things. And in order to get student engagement, to get the value of education into the foundation of those kids' lives, and just being a boost, we felt as though through our professional development, we have some things that are happening in the district, professional development-wise in that realm. And born from those conversations was this position and what we feel it can do in terms of, and that's why you heard Dr. Thornton say, well, if it's going to touch a lot of kids or maybe have an impact, you know, there are some good things that can come of that. If we need to get kids into school because they're excessively late, it takes on a different realm if we have a person that has a rapport with those kids that can go knock on the door and say, hey, you got to come to school. You know, let's go.
Just to answer your question, I think Batucket, I think some of the bigger cities with more diversity, you're seeing those jobs more. But now we're like a 5,000-student district, getting more diverse. Cumberland's not what Cumberland was 30 years ago. So big cities, you're seeing that job.
So this is not like a Rhode Island Department of Education. This is, you kind of are developing this job as you go, based on our needs?
Exactly. We're trying to be forward-thinking and saying, okay, like, so if, you know, if we're lagging in terms of achievement in certain areas, how do you target that? There's traditional and non-traditional ways. Traditional is adding academic things. A non-traditional approach would be developing rapport relationships, setting a foundation and a readiness to learn in order to get them to get where we want them to get, you know?
Thank you.
So just thinking about that director of culture and student services, are you envisioning that as, that's, just thinking about the education level, is that a social worker? Is that a teacher? Is that a, what are you envisioning that person, that person's background to be?
So again, through this, in our strategic plan, we had written in some goals around how to ready our district administrators, teachers for a multiculturalism shift in world that we're in, in Cumberland. And so as a result of that, there are impressive individuals who have partnered with our district that provide us with professional development and leadership in that realm. They're connected to Leadership Rhode Island, and they specialize in this stuff. And again, born from that, there was an individual who I won't name, but is an extremely dynamic person, who has provided professional development in our district, in our schools, because we've basically hired him as a consultant in ways to help out. And so from that, we were kind of thinking about, well, wow, what if we had our own resource within our own district and didn't have to go outside of the district to bring something in? And so that's how it started.
In terms of G6, we comped it as like a higher, I think a higher level assistant principal type salary, or a lower-level middle school principal. I want to say it was around 105-ish plus benefits. Can you give a sense of what it was in the policy?
You know, I'll add, if you ask all the administrators the same question that you asked me, everybody's going to have a different answer in terms of what that priority is, you know? And so I just want to put that out there, too.
Just to piggyback, when you say multiculturalism, you know, the, obviously, you know, historically, Cumberland's been a very Portuguese-dense culture, you know? And I, as we were doing, you know, going through the elections, this last election, you know, it was 18% English as a second language. But it kind of crested. It looked like, you know, the data said that now Spanish is overtaking Portuguese as the second, as a second spoken language, or even, you know, edging out. So would that be probably Spanish-focused, since obviously the Portuguese culture?
In general, so we have an MLL coordinator that tracks that data. In general, so we have an MLL coordinator that tracks that data. And, you know, if you wanted, the number of languages that we serve in terms of students is extensive. Yes, it's extensive. We actually have that data. And when we have these professional development sessions, she updates the administration on the breadth of that, because we have new kids coming in all the time, families coming in from other countries and all that. So if you want that data, you know, we can have it to you tomorrow.
No, I was just, I was just, you know, making an observation or asking, you know, kind of wondering whether or not you guys knew that. I'm sure you do. But my real question was, the effect on scores, what part does absenteeism play in that, in your estimation? Is that a large factor, the fact that you can't get the kids to the school?
I would say for those students who are considered chronic, it's a huge issue. You know, there's going to be a correlation between lack of achievement and not being in-school learning.
Chronic, how many days?
Chronic, I believe, man, you got me. I think it's 10. Yeah, I think it's 10.
I didn't even think of that before, about, you know, just the fact that getting them to school could improve the test scores dramatically.
Exactly, yeah. Or at least their ability to engage in their own learning to start, you know?
Thank you.
We're happy to answer other questions that are related to these jobs as well. I know some of you folks asked about subs, right? I can talk quickly about that. The sub line is about $700,000. That's no small number. And I know, you know, some folks have expressed the idea, a good idea, to have what's called building subs. And a building sub is like someone dedicated to a building and they just fill in and someone's out. An excellent idea, it's just once again, competing interest, right? It's not a bad idea at all. And we do have that on occasion in certain locations. Tim, could you update the committee on how we looked at electricity in your week, your ups and downs of this week?
Yes, like always, we continue to try and squeeze this budget any way we can. So the two areas I've been looking this week on top of is our health insurance and our electric lines. So just to lead off, so I spoke with our health consultant on Monday. Currently, the superintendent's budget has a 4% increase in health. They looked at some new data. We had a good last month. The month before that was really bad. So that month that was really bad was pushing us in the 4 or 5 range. This last month came in really well. And also, we're looking at, we can get into, I can do a full presentation on this, but there's, we're self-insured, so there's a piece of our insurance called stop-loss. That area of our insurance has been very volatile on pricing. So the concern was if those stop-loss quotes came in.
Can you explain stop-loss?
Stop-loss, so, so seeing as we're self-insured, the district is literally paying for the claims through Blue Cross. So what ends up happening is your real costs are associated with your five to 10 highest claims. So stop-loss insurance limits the liability of the district, too. I believe ours is $375,000. And then the group that we are part of, WB Health, picks up between the 375 and a million. And then the pool picks it up from a million-plus on these bigger claims. That part of the insurance is becoming increasingly expensive. Luckily, this last round of stop-loss insurance quotes came in solid. So Scott recommended we can go with a 3% increase. Not huge money, we could take $70,000 out of that line, the health insurance line. So we would look to amend that tonight or at any workshop at any point. The next piece is electricity. Electricity has been a hot topic. We went through the discovery that we were paying for BVP solar credits. Just a little background on that, we have a lot of new members. The town entered into an agreement with Revity Energy, I think it was two years ago, where the town and school department would be buying what's called solar credits. Those offset our Rhode Island Energy bill. It's basically kind of like having solar panels on the building, just the solar panels are located somewhere else. So the goal of that program was to overall lower the electric bill. What it ended up, when we looked at, when I look at the trends, our electric bill actually increased. And that was due to us paying BVP's electric bill. So last year, we reclaimed that chunk back. That was that $432,000 that some will remember that we claimed back from BVP. So in that analysis, I kind of went back to them and said, you know, where is our electric bill actually going to land? Is it, you know, in this 600? Is it 900? At one point, we had it budgeted. I had a quick phone call with them, and they were like, oh, yeah, it's 425. You guys will be 425. So I'm like, great, we're opening up tons of money. Well, they sent me the spreadsheet yesterday, and it was almost, apparently my intuition was pretty good, it was $577,000, so right at my 580. Yeah, so the reason for that big spread was apparently Rhode Island Energy is going up dramatically on the delivery side, the delivery charges. So that basically negated that $100,000 expected savings, and they shot right at that 580 number. So I would, I would leave that budget alone. I was hoping to open up some money there, but unfortunately, that's not.
So right now, we're saving some money with health. What's our fund balance, 12?
12.
12?
12, I think it would be.
1.23?
So if we pulled that health number back, oop, it's up top, right here. So this 1223, so $70,000 savings. So, like I said, I was hoping electricity would be a little stronger, but Rhode Island Energy's passing along their cost to the consumer, so.
So if you're curious about things like internet, that's Mike's area, as far as how we lock that pricing in, that's a process. Every area has like some kind of a process. Usually, we kind of kind of lock it in. But we're always looking to kind of, you know, shop around. Last year, Mike, we went from, what, Cox back to Ocean, right? There are two entities in the state, and Mike will go back and forth based on what they offer and the services. The biggest thing this year for Mike's world was cybersecurity, and it's more and more in the news as far as what districts must do to be eligible to be insured. You must do certain things. Like, one thing we did recently was, you know, two-factor authentication, where folks leave their workstation, after some minutes, it'll timeout, you have to log back in. So we have to make sure all these things are in place. As far as fish testing, Mike will send out with this company emails to us and try to, like, have us, you know, respond and see, make sure we're not, you know, hitting bad links, things like that. But that's a cost. Mike, how much is all the cyber in this budget, you think?
So the savings you found was in healthcare, but no savings in electricity. It's basically what you said was 580, now 577. So right now, the use of fund balance is about 1.3? Sorry. 1.122. And that will then bring it down to what percentage will it be at? 3%, you said? I'm sorry.
Is it used to fund balance?
Yes.
It's only set at that level?
Okay. I think it's, yeah. Maybe it's, yeah. Sorry. And so when you forecast out for the raises that you know are going to be per the contracts, what is the increase next year and the year after, and how will that affect? And is there a revenue stream coming to help with those increases?
So my expectation would be 4% on our salary lines, probably another $2.5 million, plus all the fringe, you're probably in at 3, 3.5, just to keep the district where it is for that salary increase. Then you would have busing and a few other things. So I would think we would be somewhere in that $3 million to $3.5 million of new money for next year. In terms of revenue sources, the hope would be that state aid would continue to rise. That's not a guarantee. So the town would have to, you know, increase to that level. So that's why the real part of this is, it's kind of a two-, three-year plan to make sure that the town can levy to get where it needs to be to line that up.
And historically, our ask to the town, percentage-wise, has been about what? Like, if they had to expect something from us, what do we think that would be? Or is there no expectation?
So in the 2324, it looked like we got another $700,000, so that was 1.5. Last year, it was 2.5. So we're kind of working in that direction.
I think also, as I mentioned last time, keep in mind, they're also paying the bond payment. I know some folks would ask me, why not go the 4% every year to the town? In our mind, they're paying 3.4 million next year of bond payments for the schools on top of the operating budget. So operating budget, this stuff, bond payments for all the buildings, right? That's 3.4 million next year. So that together is all the money they're investing in schools. But I know historically, it's just about operating budget. Last piece we should mention, too, the town also gives us what's called a capital line of 300,000.
Correct.
Can you explain that, Tim?
Yeah, so at some point previously, the town had established a capital fund of, it was $600,000. I'm not sure what year it was, it would have been before my time. We spent 300 of it, and I'm expecting to use 300 in this budget as well. So that would be one-time money, not included in MOE, is what that source of revenue would be.
Current town ask, I believe, is 3.39?
Over, yeah.
Yeah.
I just have a quick question here. So we keep, we're referring to with the hope of next year being able to get revenue from the town, correct?
Correct.
If I remember correctly, in that meeting that we had, the joint meeting with the town council, the mayor stated that that help probably will not be there. So we need to be cautious about relying on that help from the town next year, right?
Agreed. And I think that's why the superintendent and myself take the position of trying to preserve as much fund balance as we can. Any of those added positions, while Valiant would just add to an issue that would then, we might be cutting them again next year. So to kind of Tony's point of continuity, that's kind of where that falls in, is, you know, it's a difficult position.
Also, keep in mind, too, BVP, I think we told you last time, we have 317 students there now. We're forecasting 300 with 14 graduating. That trend could continue, it could not continue. But also, our wonder is, in FY '27, when the new BF opens up, will that have an impact on the BVP population in that part of town? Right now, I think they're around 68 students in the BF Norton zone who go to BVP, and about 25 at Garvin. So when the new four-track BF Norton opens, will that accelerate the students coming back? And that would be a budget increaser for us. That'd be great.
So that being said, then, maybe, and I just thought about this now as we're talking about it. So in addition to BF Norton being a brand-new school, if we do end up adding all these positions, maybe we should invest money into advertising costs and send advertising to the families of BVP, because they may not even know that we've done all of these construction upgrades to all of our schools. There's a lot of information that maybe they don't know. And then that could then be useful information to then, you know, get them back, you know? Because that is really going to be one of our only, that'll definitely help our revenue.
Yeah, that's the, so when you look at BVP as a whole, it used to be $4.1 million in that. That plus state aid has really helped the district kind of quell off some of these increases. I think, I think we need, what, one more year to have those seats to really be able to kind of pull them back. Once the new BF is built, then you'd have those 175 seats.
Can you explain what each student represents dollar-wise, both in state aid and the tuition?
Yeah, so there's a state aid piece to it, right? So every time, every student you bring back reduces our payments to BVP by $9,000. It's 8800 or whatever it is, it will increase, so it'll probably be closer to 9. And then also, that student then gets counted in the state aid calculation. So then we get the state aid, RADM on top of it. So it's really a double hit every time, when you take a BVP student out, we're paying for it, and we lose the state aid. So every one of those kids that comes back, we double up on. So that's, you're right, that's, you know, and we're budgeting, you know, conservatively, I would have put 317 in. I'm hedging that we'll have 300, because that seems to be the trend as we're going in. Hopefully, that number pulls back even more as we go into the first quarter. But, you know, that, if you're able to bring every one of those kids back, you'd have an additional $3 million in the budget, plus the state aid associated with them, so.
Spoke with Mario Carreno from Lincoln, and Lincoln has had very, very, very good success bringing those kids back. But one of the things that, as Andrew said, it was Andrew and I that met with him, you have to advertise, is what he said, you know, you have to, you have to do what BVP does, send out the pamphlets and try to get the people on board, so.
Yeah, I think we've seen a reduction of approximately 100 students from the peak, so we're definitely seeing them come back. But, yeah, they'll definitely, any kid you bring back is a good thing for the district.
Any other questions on this?
On this?
On anything?
All right. So I have a question in regards to line item 51302, 51303, professional development. So we are budgeting things for both of them. What exactly is that? Because now, when we go down to 53301, we also have a professional development. So are we double budgeting?
So anytime, when you look at, so one of them was 51, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so anything in the 51 series is associated with a payment to an employee.
53?
Yeah, so 53 is a professional service. So when we buy, if we're going out and Tony's contracting a PD or sending people to someplace, it would be a 53 series. So that's why you'll see it show twice. If we're having a teacher do a PD event, then it comes out of that 51 line. So, yeah, like, that's important to know. So anything in a 51 is associated with payment to an individual. It's the salaries or any of those items, so.
What is an ENE contract?
So that's, the, ENE is our building management system. That's, I believe, hey, Will's here, he can speak to ENE.
So ENE is our management system throughout the whole, pretty much throughout the whole district, where we're able to see on a computer what's going on with that room, if we need to adjust something. And then we also have, every quarter, a gentleman comes out to tweak some stuff that we found problems with.
Is that new? Is that a new system?
No, we've had that for over 10 years.
Okay. Because it didn't show data for that, for what those numbers were.
Yeah, so that, so what I've done since I've been here, I've been trying to kind of realign our object codes with what the state mandates. So I'm kind of trying to pull some stuff out. Traditionally, Cumberland kept things real tight. So the, when our auditors come out and look at our UCOA lines, I've got to break this stuff out. So you'll see areas like that where I'm kind of pulling it into a different line, just to have more compliance with UCOA. So you'll see areas like that, where that won't have historicals to it, just because we're trying to realign our UCOA codes up with what the state recommends.
I just have a question about the legal services. That looks like a possible, a huge deficit, if you look back at the actual year-end. What's that? I'm sorry, yeah, it's 53402. So being that, you know, I'm new to the school committee, but I can, you know, I can tell you that when a job was advertised at two days a month, that is not what's been going on. You know, we've been, we've been probably six or five or six meetings a month since I, you know, since we transitioned. So I can, you know, I'm looking at that like a possible, possible deficit. We're going over, you know, the proposed budget there. Is there some way to mitigate that?
So the high, the high watermark, that 202, was in a negotiation year, so we were paying a lot of, for attorneys to come out and, you know, help negotiate both contracts. So that's kind of the high watermark. I think, Dr. Thornton, we had put in a little bit, we're trying to hedge that back. We, I originally had put 200 in there. I think we ended up at 180, just, you know, to try and limit the...
I wasn't meaning, I was talking about the year-end 2024, how there was, you know, it looks like it was 310,000 or 300, there, $340,000 over, over the budget, it looks like. So 35402, 53, dyslexia. You know, if you look...
Yeah, yep. So, yeah, so you're right, 497, yeah. So that was the contract year, and then we had a couple of, that was the Chris Whitney bill as well, that caused that to really balloon last year. So that's why we're hoping to kind of get back, limit the use and try to end. But you're right, that is an exposure risk if...
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't, I'm not privy to how much we get charged every time we have an attorney, but I would have to say, as a layperson and having been in all those meetings, that we're looking at probably a lot more than what we budgeted for that.
I would say the rate for Barton Gilman's much lower than the rate for the attorney we used for the construction. I think it's half, half the number.
So we have to take, if we, if we do go over, that comes out of high, that comes out of the healthcare money? Is that what you're talking about, some of these, some of these expenses, when we go over budget, the, you know, the takebacks from the under-budget stuff?
Yeah, so what ends up happening is the budget gets approved, and then if there are overages, we have to move money. So we might have a surplus in another line, we would move it to a different line if we saw a surplus or a deficit coming. So, yeah, that's how that would end up playing out. So in this case, I would just recommend reducing the healthcare line by the $70,000. And just the offset would be, I would reduce the amount of fund balance. Unless you felt to put that money in a different location, you could do that. That's kind of how I would navigate that.
Now, have you, I'm sure you have, looked at all of personnel and who might retire, who might stay, and how that affects? Because we all know different steps... who might stay, and how that affects, because we all know different steps have different salaries that.
Yeah, so that's why you'll see the, there's different ways to show this. I, I showed it as an individual line, UCOA wouldn't be happy with me to have it as that $700,000 there, that breakage. I sometimes put it in with the personnel schedule, but I wanted the personnel schedule to tie out, so I put it as a separate item. Yeah, so we, we look at, I think there's five retirements expected, breakage also includes unfilled positions, undoubtedly, there usually ends up being one or two unfilled positions. 700 is aggressive, I, I, we won't deny that. I would prefer it to be in the half a million dollar range, so, but we're, we're going 700 just to hedge that a little bit.
And also, if you have homework for us for next time, if you have any wonders tonight or tomorrow, it's assigned us what you want us to look at and bring to you next time for like modeling something. I know Ms. Smith has an idea on busing, but if anything else comes up that you want us to look at, let us know.
I sent them data too. Mr. Demondus sent them data that they were asking about regarding languages and MLL data, so they have, I sent you data to, so that you have, you can make an informed decision about stuff.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's, you know, I mean, it makes sense, so what you're saying, the, you know, the truancy, getting the truancy up and having somebody that can relate to that, you know, the cultural differences and going out and knocking on doors and, you know, being able to speak apples to apples, you know, I mean, that, you know, when it comes to getting people back in the classroom and raising test scores, you know, I'm kind of a number, like looking at the number at the end of the, at the end of the rainbow, if that makes sense, maybe it doesn't. So, yeah, when you mentioned that, it makes, makes perfect sense.
Yeah, just, so, as part of last year's budget, we will, I will be bringing forward an amended budget that talks about that, it's already known, the $2 million, the 2.2, we just need to amend that budget, so I'll be bringing that forward probably in fiscal this month, and then we'll vote to just amend that current budget for last year, this one we're currently in, with the spending trends, just, just so you're aware, so.
Just one question, you might not have the answer right now, but there's a push at the State House and Legislature to, to have the state cover the unfunded mandates for, for busing and things like that. What do you think the roundabout number for that would be if we?
No, so that would be the, the private schools is kind of the one I've heard, right? Is that the kind of one that I've been hearing?
Yeah, it's, it's, I guess the biggest, the biggest part of that is the busing issue, how, how a lot of the, a lot of the towns that have the private schools in them have to pay for the students to be bused, and I wasn't sure if BVP, you know, that fell into that, or if even the kids that we send to private schools.
Yeah, so, I just pulled up, this is my breakdown of the, the transportation line, the 55111. So, in that, that Mount St. Charles bus, we would be able to save, we might be able to cut one bus out, so maybe if that mandate did go away, we'd probably save around $95 to $100,000. And then I, I think there might be a piece on statewide, that, that one's harder for me to put a number on, because it changes every month, but there would be substantial savings by eliminating that, so that would be a great thing to see.
But not, not millions though, right?
No, it would probably, I would probably only, Mike, would I be right, that, that one bus would then, because we were using one of our buses to run that route, so I don't think we even need that route anymore? Yeah, so we would be able to eliminate that one bus and save that $95,000, yeah.
Well, that one bus would then pay for one of those, you know, positions that we're talking about, right? A quick question on 57309 tech hardware, $512,000, it seems that we're buying all-new laptops, is that a? Renewals?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I think that's a double hit, right, Mike? Aren't we, the way it timed out, we're ending up with replacing.
Can you explain, Mike, the, the life cycle of a Chromebook? Where they go when they're done?
Yeah, so the middle school, so the line for, I don't know where it is now, there's something in here about $135,000 for textbooks, is that just all elementary school?
The main chunk of that would be the, yeah, I don't know if it's, there's, it was from your office, it's one of the, oh, the math, the wonders and all that stuff, I put in the textbook line, that renewal, because.
So, the, the six-year?
No, the, that, the six-years in 57101, the other math textbooks and all that stuff, I put into that line, so it's a renewal of all the ones, all the consumables and all those, yeah.
So, the wonders, as Dr. Thornton is referring to, is the elementary program that we have, K to 5 for ELA. And so, when you buy curriculum, there are, there are, we try to buy six years' worth of materials, and then you cycle out, right? And so, there are other things that have to be purchased, other things that may be in a textbook line item, is when you, when we have to open up additional classrooms or additional enrollment, it's a butterfly number, the coordinators in my office, we can make an educated guess on enrollment, you don't want to overbuy, you don't want to underbuy, but there are always textbook purchases and things that you have to make for those extra students who come into the district that we haven't paid for with the curriculum.
Regarding curriculum, are there times that the state of Rhode Island mandates certain curriculums be changed or updated, and that cost then falls on the school department? And do you know how often that happens?
We're smack dab in the middle of exactly what you just said. So, this started back in 2019, and K through 12, in the content areas of ELA, math, science, and social studies, we have to have high-quality curriculum, and so if it doesn't meet a certain criteria with what we're, we were using, then we've been forced to make many, many, many hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of purchases. A lot of it was in ESSA, but when that ESSA money ran out, now we've had to shoulder the burden of that. And, and we've, we still have, the high school needs upgrades based on the state requirements, and we've just started to, to do that. We've done ELA and math at the high school, but science and social studies are next up there.
Those are not funded, they're, all the burden falls on the school department?
That's correct, and then every six years, you have to renew those materials, and so what we plan on doing is providing you all with a, with a timeline schedule of when things fall off fiscally, and then when you have to renew, so that way you have a picture K to 12 with the content areas of what the financial responsibilities are.
Perfect, thank you.
Are we going to be running into any of those renewals this year, our purchases?
You just, there was an approval for an invoice with, let me think about this for a second, so I'm accurate, six through eight, social studies, we renewed, that was a new, that was a new purchase that we had to make, because we had to upgrade the curriculum there. K to two wonders, six years ago, we started it, you never want to implement too much curriculum at one time, so we scaled it, right? So, that was up for renewal, six-year renewal, and a health curriculum at the middle school that we did not have. So, do you want to talk about what you did?
Yeah, sure. So, what we did was, that purchase was a total of 410, and this went through fiscal, it was $410,000. What I did was worked with the auditors to spread that payment over six years, so that way the burden to the district's only $70,000, instead of whacking us for the full 410, because that would have been devastating, try to absorb that in one time, so we were able to spread that, that's just a commitment to the budget for the next six years, so.
And just to add one quick thing, we have, I just met with the content leader at the high school, because they were asking about social studies, and so what we're looking to do is a repeat of that. When we have to make that major purchase, we're asking for the materials upfront, a one-year pilot to give us that burden-free time, and then hopefully do something similar. Yes, and, and I have to give credit to McGraw-Hill, they work with us, so. Assume we would want another workshop, we don't have a date yet, I don't think.
We don't have an official date, the last meeting, tentatively, I threw out the Monday date, which I think is the 24th, thank you.
I think you would need to, if it's Monday, we would have to post it by tomorrow morning, is that the right math?
That could be an issue, huh?
Our's Thursday.
Yeah, if you were.
Our's Thursday, correct?
Yeah, I'm, yeah.
So, if you want, we can certainly poll the others as well, I mean, if we have U4, we have enough, we can certainly poll all of the members, if you want to do that. If you did that, you could do it that day, then actually have the 27th regular meeting on the agenda again to, you know, finalize anything you want to do.
Yeah, okay. My understanding, just make sure I'm correct, if we do have the meeting on the 24th, let's say, on the 27th, we have to vote on the budget?
Technically, it's due to the mayor, when, Tim?
The first Monday in April, so luckily, it's, I think, I believe it's the 7th this year, so that gives me time to kind of package it up and get it over there.
The 31st falls on a Monday in March, so that gives you a whole extra week.
Yeah, normally, it's real tight, I have to turn it around, but we have that extra time, but it, it's beneficial, so, yes, you would have to vote the 27th.
So, Ms. Shea can do the 24th? Mr. Bacon can do the 24th? Mr. Dean can do the 24th? Ms. Goldstein can do the 24th? I can do the 24th? I don't know what that matters. I don't know about Ms. Feather, but I think she should be able to do the 24th, because we had to switch around policy meetings because of what we thought could be, and I think.
Yeah, I think she just wasn't available this week.
This week was her week of, yeah, so I can't speak to it 100%, but I think it's more likely than not. If the 24th does not work for others, I can't do the 25th or 26th, but do not go around my schedule, because I feel like I've heard enough, and I just want the people that haven't been able to sit at the table, have the opportunity to get the answers that they need, so just don't go around me. Thank you. Anything else for your presentation?
I guess I've, you mentioned homework before, is there, is it possible to, to assign a, you know, lower, low-end, high-end dollar amount to those positions that you had put up on the board there? I mean, I, I kind of can guess what assistant principal might make, but I've, I've no idea about the multi-cultural person, you know, so, thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? All right. Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Bacon?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dean, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes, 1-4 to 0, and we adjourn at 6:04 PM. Have a great night.